Welcome to the Town of Acton Selectmen's meeting for October 23, 2018. First order is salute to flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approval of the agenda.
We approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Call for vote, all in favor, all opposed? Minutes of the last meeting?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting. Did I say that right?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the last meeting, any discussion? Call for vote, all in favor, all opposed? Department heads, committee chair updates.
Hello, Ms. Shu, I'm Chair of Cemetery Committee. We actually have a meeting on Thursday at 5:00 here on the 25th, just to let you all know.
Thank you.
Chuck Gregory Rhodes, few things, we've been looking into grants for culvert work, and last year the grants had to be in by the 17th of January, so if we wanted to do any grants, obviously we don't have much time to be doing them, and they only have them once a year, they accept them. That's the main DEP. Article 43, the private road that was passed, there's been a question about is there a limit on how much should be paid out for that? I know we had talked about a couple thousand dollars initially, just so we find out what's going on. We know that there's only like less than 20 road associations in the town right now, so we would make the recommendation that the maximum amount for this year should be $3,000 based upon the $50,000 total budget for it, and evaluate where we are at the end of the application process and in the end of June next year, and then decide how we want to move forward with it, and potentially add more money to the account if we can for next year, depending on how much we spend this year.
Okay.
Another item that we need to talk about, we have done a lot of work with the RMS, RSMS application that the state provided us. We did the roads and talked about the surface conditions and the shoulders and that. Another advantage of the system is being able to track projects and the cost of those projects, what the project actually entails, and having budget information for that and knowing when the completion dates are. Not setting a completion date, but just knowing when they are completed so that we can start doing this for historical information.
Okay.
We actually could go back yet to the beginning of this year or even the beginning of last year with budget and project information, put that in the system to start building as soon as we want to. But at a minimum, I think we should start doing it moving forward so that we have that information in the system for years to come.
Okay.
Probably a good idea if we could go back to the start of, well, is it based on fiscal year or on calendar year?
Whatever we want to be.
Okay.
It's just dates.
Yep.
That's all we do.
Probably fiscal, if we could go back to last July 1st.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not that far back, it's still in everybody's minds.
Right.
And it's not a lot of entry.
I'm sure the treasurer, I'm sorry, I was just gonna say, I'm sure the treasurer, if you make a list of what you need as far as, you know, expenses sent for a specific time period, if you put it in writing in an email, I'm sure we can get it for you.
Okay. We have scheduled a road committee meeting for next Monday. Would I attach the agenda? And it's like a preliminary project was based upon the projects and expenses that we know are going on right now. In that meeting is next Monday at 5:00, certainly all invited. We would appreciate your attendance just to keep things moving forward. We are trying to set up some processes and procedures and just understanding where everything is with the roads right now, and so that we can help out the Board of Selectmen in doing the right things and helping you make decisions or advising you on what we think is decisions based upon information we get from the state, DEP or DOT or whatever. I also talked to the company Calderwood today who did a estimate for the road bridge for doing the engineering for the Phase 1 that was submitted to us in October of '17, and a year later. I did talk to Eric Calderwood, he did say that they would still honor that contract amount at this time, and it was a little less than 18,000, 17,760 or something like that. Just so you're aware of it, that's only for Phase 1. There's also, they would include a topology and a drilling as part of that, so they could find out what needs to be done for structures, and this is for road bridge.
Okay.
Okay. And for the topology report, he said it would be fantastic if they could do that before the winter snows start coming. On a side, I decided we're having a problem getting this, the part of the area around road bridge cleaned up. I know they cut the trees down, so what I'd do, what I would do is volunteer to cut the weeds on the side of the road, and here's the, oops, sorry, the form for volunteer work.
So he can volunteer at the boards if the board wishes, since we don't have a road commissioner on that side. He just, as we discussed earlier, nothing any stronger than a weed whacker for the insurance. So no chainsaws, no trucks, no hanging from trees.
Okay.
Just the basics.
So, should I make a motion to?
No, you don't have to, as long as you don't understand it.
Okay.
Yeah, that's great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I wanted to kind of ask a question if we could while he was here. So where he reached out to the engineering company, and I'm not sure if that's something you're gonna move forward with until after your road commissioner, until you decide what you're gonna do on that side, but he mentioned snow. The only thing that would prevent the board from moving forward is they need at least one, preferably two more bids from similar companies. I mean, he's taken it upon himself to reach out to them, certainly if the road committee wanted to take that on, but we need at least one more company, if not a second. Something to compare numbers to, I mean, would you be okay with them doing that, where he called them today?
Yeah.
I mean, the company you have is certainly a good company, it's a fair number, but based on their policy and town vote for that amount of money, we need to compare it to something else, to some other company.
That was a warrant article, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yep.
And those, things like that, like that you can't, you know, it's not gonna do us any good to advertise in the Smart Shopper, so the board will, their policy allows us to just find two or three companies, kinda like we do with the sand, we mail it out to every known company. So if you could find a couple more, then they might be able to move forward with it.
Yep.
Just so you went through the fair bid process.
Yeah, it sounds like you have a list of people that you could work with, that you sent to me.
You just need something in writing from them.
Great.
Any other department heads and committee chairs?
Me.
Okay. Go right ahead.
So I have a couple of town clerk things I wanted to run by you or share with you. So you have some new plates that, oop, save that one. So this, Eric, zoom over here, because I'm not a very good vanna. So this is the new Barbara Bush plate that's come out, I don't know if you guys have seen it. A portion of it goes to the Barbara Bush Hospital, so that's kinda neat. So that just came out, so those are available now. Some people pre-bought them, and you would've gotten a voucher, so you can come in and we can change plates for you, so that's one of them, kinda excited about. This one is the new veterans plate, and this one is gonna be available on November 13th, right after the Veterans Holiday. Anybody that has a veterans plate is gonna be required to change, and they're gonna give you a year to do that. So you're welcome to come in anytime, just to change and get the nice one, or if you wanna wait till the time of renewal, either way, it's not gonna cost you any extra money to change plate, but, thought that was kinda?
Oh, nice.
Oh, yeah.
I think I like, I like it.
That stands out a lot more than the other one.
Yeah, so, but don't come in before November 13th, because they've sent us all the inventory, but they won't let us issue them. Absentee ballots are available, remember the deadline to vote absentee is Thursday before the election, unless you meet special circumstances as defined by the Secretary of State's office. To date, we've probably already issued about 200 of them, so we are busy, busy with that. Taxes by now, all of your tax checks should've cleared, please check your bank first to ask them if it's cleared before you call me and ask them if we got it. But we're all caught up with taxes and everything, so I think we're in pretty good shape. Dog licenses are available, effective October 15th. Beat the rush, get the pooches done.
Good.
Don't think that's it?
Okay, any other department heads, committee chairs? Nope, okay, we'll move on to old business. Generate a bid.
I'm not worthy, I just, it's just not a priority.
Yeah, no, it's been a little busy.
The power goes out, no, I will get to it soon.
Okay. ACO position.
Okay, so this is gonna be my, this is, you know, all our pleading aside, now I'm gonna look to the board and say, we need to do something, we need a plan. So the end of October is almost here, you know that I have covered the entire month of October. It's not about the stipend, it's not about the time, it's just, it's not something that I can do. I need to get rid of this ICO phone, we need, I mean, even if, if we don't have anybody that's coming forward, then you guys have to come up with another plan. You either have to attach it to someone else's job, the selectman cannot do it by law, I already checked into that, because I'd have never taken that phone on October 1st if I could've given it to one of them, we were gonna rotate for each week. It is a busy little phone.
True.
You're not allowed to, yeah, you can't be the municipal officer and the animal control officer for some reason.
Wow.
I checked.
Okay.
So, in all honesty, you know, kidding aside.
What happens if the town just, we don't have one?
Then, I've asked, I've asked them that, and they just keep telling me, you need to find one. And I said, well, we've been advertising, I put in a couple of different newspapers now, and today I got a call, and I did get a message on Facebook from somebody else, and the two people that have kinda mentioned that they might be, work full-time, nine to five.
Well, that's kinda.
But at least they'd have the phone on nights and weekends, because it rings, and obviously it's not this one, but it rings all the time, especially, they don't care what time it is when they call. I'm gonna be in divorce court soon if I don't get rid of that phone, so, please.
All right.
Stop laughing. This is very serious, we need an animal control officer.
Maybe we could attach it to the, make a pad of the lawn mowing bed.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, I think that'll be the best one.
Here we go.
He's still laughing, he's still laughing.
Well, you know, and they will, they will probably throw daggers at me next weekend, but, next week, but fire and rescue have 24/7 coverage.
I was gonna say, I was gonna mention that.
Couldn't they rotate it every day?
And delegate a couple of deputies, I mean, my deputies in my office do 10 different things. Putting it out there. Anyways, we honestly, we need to figure something out.
Yep, okay.
I think you've got three more days. Seven.
Okay.
Do you have to be a resident to do that job?
No, no you do not.
All right.
Nope. And I think, and not to keep going into this, but I think, once and if things change in Shapley, because we have an older, older gentleman that at some point is going to retire, I think that Acton and Shapley will be able to put that together, and it'd be enough of a stipend for one person to be able to live off the position. I mean, it's, it is a low, you know, it's a low position, you can't expect them not to work off anything else unless they're retired or don't have the income, but, once things change in Shapley, together, it might be inviting to somebody as a full-time job, but just not yet.
Town report?
Yeah. Nope.
Okay.
Okay.
The only one I don't have, and I have delegated, and my assistant is starting it, so we are on it. District 2, I never got one from them, so if, I'm not sure how you wanna handle that.
Okay. 13th Street.
We're tabling that until after the date came and went.
Waiting for the date.
That's right.
Date, November. Article 43.
Yeah, I was just gonna kinda reiterate what your chairman said, we did have an individual come in today, he wanted to know what the status of his application was, so he was looking for a turnaround time and also an amount, so, but I did email them to Mrs. Berlin and to Elise, so I think that they'll, somebody will at least get in contact with them, acknowledge that you have them, and maybe tell them when your next meeting is.
I'm assuming that'll be discussed on Monday night?
Yeah, it was on the agenda.
Okay. I just had a, I just had a question, one of the applicants didn't put a dollar amount on it, they said it depends on what we give them.
He wanted to submit it after he knew how much they were going to get.
Right.
Some of the things that he had put in the application aren't reimbursable.
Okay.
Because it's only for maintenance and repair, so I can contact both of them, let them know that we're still waiting on a decision for the amount, and that I have them, and let them know what, one of them is fine, the other one just, we need the bill, the pay bill.
Perfect. Okay, all right. Thank you.
I'll contact both of them and let them know what the status is.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Great.
Bridges, canal, and row. We covered canal, we covered row.
So row, I just wanted to let you know that, I think we talked last week, the guardrails on the replacement side are getting done, the approach is gonna have to be, is gonna wait until a new road commissioner comes in to do that. The other piece on canal, road bridge, the town administrator reached out to me today, and I know that she spoke to Mr. Gregory, just kinda reiterating where they were at with it, and that they're waiting for a notification from Maine, from New Hampshire DOT to see if there's any grants for canal before they move any forward, so she just wanted to let us know that they're still waiting.
Okay.
But she did communicate, so.
Great. Lincoln School Insurance.
All right, so last week, under public comment, question came up about this, so I sent it to HR, who's our, who's Michelle. The insurance issue with Lincoln School was, was before I took over on the insurances, so I don't have exact details on what the insurance company said, however, anything I know would be bits and pieces I picked up along the way. I believe that the insurance company didn't want, what it didn't want was for groups to be going in there, such as 4H or using it, because it's not structurally sound, but like I said, I never saw the report, so I can't speak to the matter. There is some coverage on the building and minimal liability, because it's a vacant building, and vacant buildings have accidental exposures at times. As for someone going in to do work, first I would ask if it was a contractor or a group such as the Historical Society, they must provide their own insurance to cover themselves, and if it's a volunteer, I would need a volunteer form filled out, and she just says that she hasn't seen either one of those. Like I said, there is some coverage there, and if someone wants to go in and be working there, she said, I'm sure we can make sure the town is covered liability-wise on either side. Just need more detail about specifically what someone wants to do, who is doing it, when it's happening, and if the board approves it. So that's a follow-up from Mrs. Shu's question last week.
Okay. So on the work, there was, what was the work inside?
She's got some questions, I don't know what they wanted to do.
I don't recall.
So it sounds like it's possible to get work done in there.
Absolutely possible.
Just let us know.
What they were told is they didn't want, you know, Girl Scouts meeting there, they didn't want 4H meeting there.
4H had met there for, I don't know, how old are we, Robin?
Well, the building is now structurally not sound, so now you can't.
We've actually met.
Well, that was when it was stronger.
But anyway, as far as what they want to do, they did not give a timeline.
Who is they, first of all?
The Historical Society.
So they have their own liability insurance.
They do, and I'm not 100% certain on this. This is, I'm fairly new to this, that committee, so I gotta get more into it, but what it is, is that, it's a catch-22, because I know when they were trying to work with the church down here at Maple Grove, we had to provide the insurance in order for them to be able to come in and work what they had to do, and we couldn't provide the, it's like you guys, we couldn't provide it because we needed X, Y, and Z, and so on and so forth. It's unfortunate, because it's a catch, finally.
Well, it's not, though, there's a solution to it, we just need to know who wants to do it and when.
And got that soluted, so we've actually now got full coverage as well as liability down there, so I mean, it doesn't, it just takes a matter of who wants to work with you. My, my thing is, I'm not 100% certain, I know they'd like to fix the sill, I know they'd like to go inside and either paint, change, you know, whatever needs to be, you know, kinda little things like that that need to be done. We did grant them, the town did grant them $2,000 during morn finance and all the budget time, they'd like to utilize some of that there, they also have another place where they have to utilize some of that too, but they didn't know what they needed to do to access, no more than what you guys need to know how they're gonna access, and this is kinda the catch-22.
So the easiest thing, the easiest way to move forward to this point is to get something in writing, specifically who's gonna be doing the work, what specifically they're gonna be doing, and present that back to the board, because although they have the funds and whether they have insurance or not, the selectman, the town still owns the building, we wanna make sure that that's something they want done to it.
Well, that's kinda, that's kinda it.
So just put it all in writing, and we'll get it on an agenda, and let the board and talk about it, and maybe reach out to some other people involved in it, but.
Because I know the last meeting that we had, they actually said if they had to, they'd take part of that $2,000 and actually do insurance.
Yep.
Knowing that the work has to be done.
And we may be able to hook them up as volunteers, it's, we just need details first before, but I wanted to get you an answer, because you spoke in public comments.
Because I know the cell, I know underneath the cell needs to be fixed at one time, and I know one time, when we were, 10 years ago, when there was a group of us, we actually fixed the sill, but fix only lasts so long.
Right.
And in the same way with inside, they actually put a new roof, they referring the Historical Society, put a new roof on it to stop the leakage and stuff like that, but they haven't been able to access it inside to paint or to take care of stuff like that because of the lack of liability.
Right. It sounds like, based on Michelle's email, we can certainly get around it, so just make a list and find out who's gonna do it, when, and what they're looking for, and we'll get some answers.
Their next meeting, and I'm not sure if they'll get to me before, but their next meeting will be April.
Perfect. We'll take it off the agenda until then.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, District 2 employees.
All right, so to the Board of Selectmen, this is also from Michelle, who covers most of our HR. The employees of District 2 Roads are hired by the town and they're paid by the town. The town has not fired these employees. It is my understanding that these employees are welcome to continue working for District 2, once the road commissioner has been appointed. Until such time, it is deemed unnecessary to keep these employees, they are considered laid off, and they are able to collect unemployment for a period of time that they are laid off. I think it's important for the board to notify them in writing of their effective layoff date, which is 10/19, and their right to file for unemployment, if they have not already found employment, and to notify these employees as soon as an appointed person has been made for road commissioner in District 2, who they can report to to find out if they are needed any longer. The town has not fired these employees, the positions remain open, so I don't feel a severance package or other information is appropriate. So hopefully that answers some of your questions, we will put a letter out this week letting them all know that, just to officially give them something in writing, but they, until we fill the position and determine if those employees are needed or can work there, they certainly can collect unemployment.
Okay. Very good. Mary Grant updates.
So Mary Grant had their pumpkin carving, I heard from both Barbara and Mr. Neal, they both said that it went off very well, they sent some pictures that I forwarded you via email. They had a great time, they had a good turnout, 25, 30 kids, another 20, 25 adults, so they were very happy. As you'll see in the appointments, a little further down, they have six or seven people now that have stepped forward and they're ready to take over and move forward, I've invited them to your next board meeting to kinda introduce and give you some of their thoughts. Barbara and Dick are gonna stay on as advisors, so they're happy about that, so it went well, and everybody ended up a good time.
Great. Flat Ground Road.
So as we discussed last week, we know that the work, actually, you wanted to say something about Flat Ground Road before I started?
Yes, we lost a, one of the residents on Flat Ground Road yesterday morning.
Dennis, yesterday morning?
Yesterday morning, yep. Irene.
Schneider.
Schneider, yes.
If anybody remembers a town meeting this past June.
Yep.
She was a little lady at the microphone that wouldn't, she was a sweet, sweet, kind woman.
Yeah, very instrumental really in, in getting some of the money to Flat Ground Road to get it where it is, and, so, just feel bad that she's not here to see, will be here to see the end of it, so.
And certainly condolences to all of the Long family and Paul and his family down there, I mean, you guys, you know, like Irene, you know, and she spoke to me many, many times over the years, and certainly got to know her, but she thought the world of you and your family, I know, I don't have to tell you that, Dennis, but you and Paul certainly took care of her and were like kids to her, so we are very sorry.
Yep, I met her, met her just a couple of times, but, you know, outside of town meeting, but.
You knew when Irene walked in the building.
Yeah, oh yeah.
So, as far as the road, so the last conversation, and they do tend to stick together after a while, but the last conversation we had about Flat Ground Road was that we had $550, let's say, give or take, in that account, when the District 2 Road Commissioner resigned. From there, we got two more bills, one was a culvert bill for $880, and one was material, which I believe is between $6,000 and $7,000.
Yeah, $6,400 or something.
So, Michelle sent an email to May Municipal to find out how and when, how we were gonna pay that, because the warrant article clearly said $20,000. May Municipal has gotten back to her and said that based on the agreement in 26A, which is the agreement between the people and Flat Ground Road, that you did not have, that we do not have the authority to pay these two bills. The only way they're gonna get paid is if we have a special town meeting. You can't take them out of any other account, Michelle talked to them about the contingency fund, you've got that one article that says that you can spend up to $15,000 based on a vote, they felt like based on the agreement, it has to go before a special town meeting. So, we're gonna need to schedule that, at this point, the bills are sitting on her desk and she can't pay them. The other thing, the other piece of that is that our other road commissioner, and I'm not sure at this point that he's able to do the work or willing, we haven't had any recent talks, but he's looking at $9,000 to finish it. So that's gonna put us 9 and 7, 16, almost 17 grand over.
Almost twice.
Almost twice, almost twice what we were told it was gonna cost.
I mean, I can understand an override, but that's, a little much.
Well, and, you know, and I did speak, even though I did speak to District 2, and made him aware of the situation, he was under the impression that the agreement made it a town road, and that when he realized it was getting close to going over, he thought he was gonna be able to just take those out of his other maintenance accounts, which, which generally, when you have special projects, you can do that, but because of the warrant article and the way that it was written, they said, they said that we couldn't, so we need to get through these next couple of meetings, but again, Michelle can't pay these, so we're gonna have to schedule them, but I figured we shouldn't commit to dates until we see what comes in on October 30th?
You speaking as a road committee member, okay.
I'm done? No, no, I guess I'm done.
I took a ride down there today.
Okay.
And there was two new culverts put in, and the ditching around the culvert. One of the culverts, a metal culvert, was taken out, it's still laying there, and then there's also a couple of pieces of plastic culvert that was cut out. I'm not sure, I haven't seen anything with invoices or anything as to what was actually accomplished, or.
The board has seen them all.
We've seen them, yeah.
But the road is still very rough.
Yeah.
And ditching has only been done around those new culverts, it doesn't look like there's been any other ditching besides that, unless the leaves just completely filled it up.
I think so.
Yeah, because it went all the way down the road.
It was all at the very end and the very beginning.
Yeah.
I also noticed that on the shoulders, along the side of the road, there's been rock that's been put down, I'm assuming that that was just graded over to the side, so that the shoulder itself was maybe an inch or two higher than the road itself, which is gonna stop drainage from, from happening.
Yep, thank you.
Anything else on Flat Ground?
Yeah.
Okay, anything else? Either one of you on Flat Ground?
It's just frustrating, that's all, I mean, we sat down, and at most, it was gonna be 18,000, I don't know how this happened.
Yep, and I think, I mean, I think before we go any further, whether we need maybe to get another estimate as well, to see what it would cost. I mean, we know.
We know what we owe, we've gotta get that paid first, then, you know.
Yeah, that needs to get taken care of somehow. Yeah, we know what we owe. Yeah, that needs to get taken care of somehow. There was what, nine to finish it? Is that what, yeah?
I mean, they can't go into snow season with it the way it is.
I mean, you legally have to plow that.
Right.
It's not, I mean, it's not up for discussion. It has to be plowed. I mean, you know, I, you know, and you hate to say that the voters of the town doesn't have a choice, but you've entered into a contract legally when you approve that in June. They're going to, I mean, they're going to have to see it through, at least, I mean, you know, you have to pay those two bills that are out there.
True.
I mean, the town, you know, is liable. These are both local contractors that, you know, I'm sure would appreciate being paid.
Exactly.
And then as far as finishing it, I mean, I'm not sure that anybody's going to put their plow over it in the condition it's in.
Yeah.
But I don't know. I don't do that kind of stuff, so.
How do we get a couple more, maybe, estimates to try to see if we can get something less?
I mean, I can certainly reach out to a couple of people. I was kind of waiting for the October 30th date to come and go as far as the road commissioners and the, you know, who puts in for it and who puts in for the plowing. Maybe we can pull something there, but, I mean, there's a couple of maybe contractors we could call and just see, but, I mean, his, you know, his estimate, whether he does it or not, is pretty, it's pretty spelled out, but we can certainly get some more prices. But you're not going to be able to wait on the, on the invoices.
No. So do we need to, do we want to make a date now for a special town meeting, or?
Um, no, I think we'll wait until after the October meeting.
Okay.
Just because, as I understand it, and correct me if I'm wrong, what I heard you guys say at our road, our workshop we had a week or so ago, was that we don't know at this point if we're going to get somebody in for road commission that can do the job. We don't know if we're going to get bids per mile at, you know, nine, 10, $11,000.
Right.
We don't know if we might ask the town that this might be a good time to turn it into a department head. You know, we don't know what direction we're going into. So if you're going to have a special town meeting...
But say we do find, okay, just say we find a road commissioner that can do it. He can't use any of that money either, though, can he? So...
No, but I'm just saying, if you're going to have to have a special town meeting, we don't know if you have enough money to plow District Two yet. So I'd rather not set a date and, you know what I mean? We need to know exactly what we're asking the people.
For the sake of waiting a week or two, see if...
Well, just one week, no more than a week, right? Because if you, if, let's just say you don't get any road commissioner bids in and your lowest plowing, I mean, Alfred, we talked about this, Alfred went to what, $7, $9,000 a mile. Shapley's paying $4,000, $5,000 a mile. So we, that's, you know, and that's, those are bids that went out a year in advance.
Right.
So we're at bid now, you know, that's why I'm just hesitant to spend any money and...
Right.
Until we open those, I don't know what articles are going to be on the special town meeting. Once we set a date, we commit ourselves to how many articles are on there and...
Yeah, it may just be one. It may just be to take care of this bill, or maybe to take care of this bill and appropriate some more money for...
To get it finished.
I mean, it's out of your control. You have to plow the roads.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, in the meantime, maybe we can get another quote or...
(sighs)
Okay, fine. Okay, Dozer, we can skip over that because I'm working on that one. So I have no update.
Okay.
So I may have just got the information for who to contact, so, thank you. Appreciate that.
Doing the best I can.
Okay, new business. Holidays.
Holidays. So Veterans Day falls on Monday, the 12th. It is in your personnel policy. So the transfer station will be closed on Monday, the 12th. Town Hall, although we're not open on regular business hours, but any staff that works regular Mondays, we will be closed as well. You'll get a memo from Michelle regarding payroll and check requests with the shift of dates. So you're good with that. It's based on the policy, so.
Yep.
Then Thanksgiving falls on Thursday, the 22nd. My mother is FaceTiming me. Oh, I gotta love her, sorry. Thursday, the 22nd is Thanksgiving. In the past, Thursday has been a paid holiday for the employees that work. Friday, we've always closed, but it's not paid. The employees would use PTO. So that, what is your pleasure on?
Do the same as we've always done.
Same, yep.
So we'll close Thursday and Friday. That won't affect the transfer station. And that kind of equals out because, as far as the dates. So that's November. In December, while we're talking about it, so Christmas is on a Tuesday this year. So Christmas Day is in your personnel policy. What I would propose to you is that you close the transfer station on Monday, the 24th, so that can be their Christmas holiday. They would have, they would have Monday and Tuesday off and then they'll reopen on Wednesday. Town Hall, same thing. Monday isn't, isn't a holiday per se, so we would be closed Tuesday. We'll also return to work on Wednesday. So transfer station closed Monday, the 24th. Town Hall closed Tuesday, the 25th.
Yep.
And then New Year's Eve, New Year's Eve falls on Monday, the 31st. I look back at the last few years, regular schedule for the transfer station and town hall, it's not really, I mean, not a holiday per se.
If someone wants it, they can take...
They could take, yeah, right. But the transfer station would be open as scheduled.
Yep.
But then that Tuesday, which is January 1st...
Yep.
Is...
A holiday.
A holiday.
Yep.
So you're good with those changes?
Yep, and it follows with what we've done in the past. Okay, ZBA.
Code enforcement reached out to me to see where we stood where with zoning board of appeals members. He thinks that team may or may not have a case coming forward. So we reached out. We don't currently have anybody appointed to zoning board. So I reached out. There were five members on there. Roland Waterhouse, Lois Mischuh, Dan Archibald, Dennis Long was on there, but he can't be on the zoning board of appeals because he's now on the planning board, so that would be a conflict. And then the fifth member, I haven't been able to get a hold of, but I did touch, did talk to these three that are willing to be reappointed for three-year terms.
Okay.
So if you'd be so kind, and so that's going to mean we have one opening. Everybody wants to be on the ZBA. They meet once every five years.
Think they've literally met?
No, really.
I think they've met twice.
I said, once every five years.
I think, I think it's been twice since...
And maybe that was the first time for...
Why so little?
Well, zoning board of appeals essentially is going to, is the administrative appeal for a, something that code enforcement has issued, a permit that code enforcement has issued. So if, if he issued me a permit, you know, or someone thought that he issued me a permit incorrectly or wrongfully, so they'd go to the ZBA, right?
Okay.
Okay, we have two, Roland Waterhouse, Lois Mischuh, and Daniel Archibald. The selectmen, municipality of Acton, due in accordance with the provisions of the state, laws of the state of Maine, hereby appoint you as zoning board of appeals with and for the municipality of Acton until June 30th. This is a three-year appointments.
Yes.
Till 2021.
And as long as we can.
What is your pleasure?
Make a motion to appoint Roland Waterhouse, Lois Mischuh, and Dan Archibald to the zoning board of appeals until June 30th of 2021.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor, all opposed. Okay, abatement.
Last week, you sent, you signed several of them. When I was actually putting them into the software, I noticed an issue on one of them. You look at this one from last year, he had the current land value before the abatement at 32,500. It was actually 32,550. So when I went to abate it for that amount, it didn't zero out the account. I spoke to Dennis today and it was just an error in his part. Five is a zero, so.
Just need to...
It's a difference of a dollar, but when you're balancing books, it matters.
Yep.
So.
Difference of $50.
Well, yeah, but the abatement amount, because you times that times the 1205 mill rate, so.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
In the end, yep.
Yep.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, okay, I see it now. Yep, the very bottom. Okay. Okay, and this is on map and lot 233-017-002. It's basically, it's just, it was a dollar off, so. What's your wishes?
I make a motion to accept the tax abatement on map lot 233-017-002.
I'll second that motion.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor, all opposed. Okay, we'll sign the new one. Okay, Mary Grant.
These are just the follow-up appointments from our conversation earlier regarding the other people that wanted to be on the committee.
Okay. Wonderful. Okay, we have Bobby Joe Rogers, Laura Duskowski, and Tammy Crampitz. Thank you. The selectmen of the municipality of Acton, due in accordance with the provisions, the laws of the state of Maine, hereby appoint you as Mary Grant Committee members within and for the municipality of Acton until June 30th, 2019. What's your pleasure?
I make a motion to appoint Bobby Joe Rogers, Laura Duskowski, and Tammy Crampitz to the Mary Grant Committee until June 30th of 2019.
I'll second that motion.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor, all opposed. New Bridge Road.
So we talked about New Bridge Road last week. It was one of the projects that District One actually spoke to us about originally in our early conversations. The idea was, because we don't know where we're headed in winter, that maybe we shouldn't be spending a whole lot of money until we figure, figure that piece of it out. After speaking with the treasurer, she reminded us that the warrant article in regards to paving references the Europe funds, which are, is a state reimbursement that has to go towards paving. So even if we got a number that we had to go to a special town meeting for, we couldn't use these paving funds towards anything else anyways, because they're earmarked for it because we get reimbursed. So I wanted to make sure that you understood that and it was on the table. The New Bridge project to, to, I'm going to say rip it up and grind it and put it back down, I think is what it's saying, is $116,878. As I understand it from District One, District Two had put some prepping work into it and it's ready to go. He, District Two, there is enough money in that paving account to do this project, but that will pretty much drain it. The other thing the board should be aware of, aware of is that there is some erosion control and edging that would need to be done. District One has stated that he would do that if he so chose, because he does plow that road in the winter. He'd be looking at four guys at a full day's work at erosion control, and then another four guys at two full days of work doing some edging, and he thinks that he would need about $3,000 in material. Some very quick numbers, averaging, figuring out what they make an hour, eight, 10-hour days. I think that we figured about $6,000 total. It's not from District One, with the, yeah, but that's not from District One. I want to make that clear. That was my number that I came up with. But you do need to vote one way or the other, because it's out of a different district whether you want him to move forward. I only did that math to try to give you some sort of idea, and I based that off the average of an hourly rate.
So you're looking at eight employees at eight days to equal how much?
No, I'm looking, four guys.
I thought you said it was two different things.
No, it's only three days.
I thought you said there were two different things they needed to do.
Well, yeah, so one day, all four of them are going to be there doing erosion control.
Oh, okay.
And then the next day, the next two days, those same four guys are going to be doing edging.
Okay, okay.
So three days altogether.
Three days altogether, plus the material. And, and don't, I mean, please don't use that $6,000 number that I am giving you as a guideline. That's just what I came up with mathematically. I don't want to be held to a number.
If we do the, if we do the road at $116,878, that is, like you said, that is strictly paving money. We can't use that anywhere else. But the $6,000, plus or minus, would come out of the regular fund, regular accounts that could be used for something else, plowing or whatever.
Right.
But in order to do the road, you really need to do that after you're done doing the road, because it's going to leave, well, here, it's two-inch base hot top going down. So you're going to have a two-inch lip from the hot top down to the shoulder of the road. So you have to do the shoulders.
And I think, I mean, at the end of the day, if you, if you end up getting a road commissioner in town, or a road commissioner appointed to the position that has the material and that can do the job through the road commissioner posting position, he'll be able to, he or she will be able to stay within the budgets of what was approved, because, you know, anybody that applies for that is going to, applying based on those rates. I think we'd be fine winter-wise. My concern is, is that we don't get somebody in that position and we have to go per mile. But I think that either way, I don't think $6,000 is going to make a difference. I think you're going to be at a special town meeting.
Yeah, I think you're right. Yeah.
So, and I don't know how much money, you have any idea how much prep work went into this road money-wise? That's the only thing, I guess, that would gear me towards doing it, because if District Two has already put X amount of dollars in getting it ready to pave, we don't want to lose that.
The road's in bad, well, bottom line is, the road's in bad shape. It's not going to be good to plow. So...
They've done ditching and grass and hay so, so far. I don't, I don't know that he did any culvert work on it. I don't think he needed any.
District One didn't say anything about that, but...
He didn't say anything about needing any culvert work.
Those were, Kim and I met with him yesterday and those were the, that was the information he gave us.
Okay.
But, you know.
We don't have the MS in front of us.
To say what?
Mr. Gregory.
I mean, we know what's, yeah.
Do you recall in doing the road survey, whether that there was any culvert work or anything like that, that you might have seen there?
Not that I remember.
I know that's quite a question to ask, but...
Not that I remember seeing anything done.
Okay.
I would say also that to get that amount of road done and only costing less than $10,000 or less than $8,000, whatever the number is, seems like it's something that, you know...
Well, plus he's already put money into it. We don't know what's already been spent to this point.
Right.
Yes, but it's been spent.
Right, to finish it.
But it's been spent.
Right, right.
Okay, okay.
I feel like it needs to be done.
I do, too. Yeah, I do, too. I think, I mean, if we, if, if we backed up a month...
It would have been done anyways.
It would have been done. Yeah, exactly. And we wouldn't, we wouldn't be making the decision. It would have been done by a road commissioner.
Right.
So, yeah, I think we need to go ahead and do it, especially where the paving crew is in town and they can do what they're here.
So do you want, I mean, I will, we certainly don't have to put a cap on it, but I will, I can verbally double-check with him, you know, ask him if he feels like $6,000 is a safe number.
Can we put a cap, though?
I mean, you can, but the problem is if he starts the work and, you know, we...
We can, and we can probably wait on that for a little bit, and maybe there is a road commissioner, the new road commissioner, might be able to do that.
Right.
So, I mean, that, we do have a little bit of time before that.
Do we know when, I mean, do we know when, because District One has, what, two roads being paved this time, right now, or next week or something?
Garvin's torn up.
Garvin's all, yeah, Garvin's being reclaimed.
So he's got to do, they got to do Garvin Road, and then they have to do, there's another road, I thought, that they were paving right now?
On the sand page.
Sand page.
Sand page, yes.
Sand page, okay, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So let's go ahead.
Yeah, so it may, yeah, good point.
Yeah, let's go ahead and at least get the, get it reclaimed and get it paved.
Yep.
And then...
So am I hearing you tell me that you're not authorizing any expenditure? You're only authorizing the paving at this point?
I would say.
Yeah. I think it's going to take a little while and we may have...
So at least, right, you would have another meeting. I can either get a tighter number from him, or we can check with the new person in the position.
Yeah, and you don't, I mean, you don't have to do the edges the day after you pave it.
Okay.
You know, that can wait just a little bit and...
And erosion control, okay. Well, the under, that would come out of the paving account. That we can pay out of the paving account, so.
Okay, that was my next question.
Yeah, he did, and that was one of the things that District One mentioned, is that, I mean, this number, this 116, 878 may fluctuate a little bit if, if the paving company doesn't have flaggers that day and District One's got to throw a couple in there. But again, we can pay it out of paving.
Or, we still have employees in District Two.
We absolutely do have employees in District Two.
There's a job for them. They're qualified to pay, to flag, so we just need to give them the, go ahead to do it and maybe find them some flags and some vests.
Well, that's assuming that the, that paving company, and I don't know how that works, but I don't want to step on any of these guys' toes.
The town owned those.
Huh?
Yep.
Didn't we buy both sides?
We bought, the last thing that, that we bought, were like hard hats and jackets. I mean, I can't imagine, we're not going to ask for the jackets back. Those are worn and from the guys.
But the guys should still have them, right?
Oh, they are. I'm sure they still have them, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, yep.
Okay, so we're making a motion to approve the New Bridge paving?
Yep.
Oh, yes, I make a motion to authorize the New Bridge paving.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. Do we want to put a dollar cap of the 116, 878?
No.
No. That's what it is going to cost, right?
That's, that's from Carroll.
Oh, okay.
That's from, that's from Fak Carroll.
That's their number, yeah, that's not our number.
Okay.
I mean, you could say not to exceed 117,000 or, you know, paving only. I mean, you can put something like that in your motion if you want, but, I mean, if it changes a buck or two, I'd rather you didn't tie it to that penny, but as long as you're clear that it's only for paving, they won't spend anything else.
Okay. Moved and seconded to authorize Fak Carroll to pave New Bridge Road. It's approximately 4,975 feet, 22 feet wide. Okay, moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor, all opposed. Okay. Public comment. Anyone from the public have anything they'd like to say?
Dennis Long, two things. Is, now, with the zoning board, Jen, you're going to try to get four more people.
So we have one, two, three, I think it was five altogether.
And two alternates.
I'll have to double-check.
Yeah, we, that's the way it is.
Two alternates, yeah. I just got an email, so we reached out to one other one and we knew you, there was a conflict.
And, and the question was asked, didn't understand why they don't meet very often. Back 30-some-odd years ago, when I was first on the zoning board.
It's a good thing they don't have to meet.
We met every couple of weeks.
Wow.
And the reason why we don't meet like we did is the quality of our code enforcement. Kenny does a great job, and there's very, very few times that somebody appeals his decision. And this last, then I've been on it, we had a workshop and we had one appeal. So it's...
No, it's good.
Just because he does a great job. Just because he does a great job, that's why they don't meet very often.
Great, thanks. Thank you.
I don't have anything but a comment. If we're out in the woods, that includes all of us, remember we orange now until the end of December anyway, if, because we're all going to be out hunting, and we forget every now and then, I've gone, been known to go home, go back, pick up orange for everybody, and start all over, so just remember to wear it. Doesn't matter how close to the edge of the road you are, you still have some people that don't get the concept, so please wear it, be safe.
Hunting season.
The one thing I neglected to mention earlier was, with the snow season coming up, turn around easements. I think there's several places where, where you don't have an easement to actually turn the snowplows around and that.
Can we just work on District One for now?
I don't, I don't know whether they're.
Do you have a list of them?
I think they're in District One and District Two.
They're all, I mean, I just, and I don't mean that seriously, I mean, I just don't know how we would address that on the other side without somebody in the position.
If you could get started on District One, I mean, it's something we've talked about since I've been here.
And I gave you Scott's email address, so maybe even a phone call to him, invite him to Monday's meeting, and maybe.
I already did.
Perfect, maybe he can talk about some of those.
And then, the second thing, while you were talking about the shoulders on New Bridge, did anyone ask F.R. Carroll if they did that type of work and what they were charged to do it?
Good point.
Got it.
It'd be cheaper.
Reference New Bridge Road, there are some trees that need to be cut, and they're already mowed, District Two Road Commissioner had already mowed them, and I believe he was in the process of getting them cut before we do payment on that road, because the roots are coming up, that's what's making all the lumps and cracks in them, because the trees are too close, they need to be taken away before, before they, before we pave. I hate to see us pave and have to remove them trees and rip up the new pavement of the gravel that we put down there.
True.
Another thing, when did we, the town of Acton, put deadlines on projects?
When a project was asked to be done maybe five, six, seven, eight times over the course of a year and a half.
Okay.
That's why.
Did, how did that come about, and why did the phone call made to a certain person? And did the chairperson know that phone call was being made?
Chairperson did know it was being made, he walked in as the phone call was being made, and I don't really want to go back into a lot of this.
Well, I think the town people needs to know if the chair knew prior to that phone call being made.
Seconds.
Seconds, that's not, not, as far as the taxpayer, that is not acceptable.
Well, I don't want to.
Wait a minute.
Like I say, I don't want to get, I don't want to go back and, I don't want to go back and, 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 I mean, I'd be happy to talk to you afterwards, Robin, about it.
Absolutely.
You know, we're happy to, so.
You know, because I don't think the town people.
We had two projects, one on each side of town, one project was a couple of years, and the other one was three or four years, and I think we just got fed up and said, you know something?
And I think, you know, as a, as a taxpayer, I believe we voted to do the project before the next fiscal year.
I just want to make sure, we did not put a time limit on flat ground.
No.
There was no timeline.
No, we didn't.
The only.
The phone call that was made.
Was because tax.
Somebody else to do the job.
No, we did not say that.
No.
That phone call was not flat, that, nope, you are misinformed.
Extremely misinformed.
No timeline on flat ground. We just simply asked when it was going to be done, because we had taxpayers asking us, and we said, we don't know, we'll ask for you.
And that's all it was.
And that's what that phone call was.
Well, I believe the chairperson should have been notified before.
He was on his way.
It's irrelevant at this point, so.
But I believe the taxpayers should have, should have.
Yep, I mean, the taxpayers elect us to do the.
We have a legislature for a chair, and that chair should know what's going on at all times.
He knows.
He does, he does, so, yeah, thank you. Next, that'll be you.
Oh, you made it up.
And I promise not to disappoint you, Eric.
Thank you, you didn't.
I know. Still have no defined purpose for the road committee, not from the Board of Selectmen, please get busy on this issue.
I think we're going to work on that Monday night.
I'm coming in.
Second thing, I believe there's an upcoming workshop that's not listed on the agenda. It was posted.
The rec?
Rec.
Yeah, it's on my, I just hand-wrote in rec, when it gets to be my turn, I'm going to announce it.
Just wanted to remind you. And my third and final thing is, when are we going to, as a town, take full responsibility for flat ground road? It's a town road, it was never discontinued.
That's the battle that we.
If need be, I'll put a petition in to get the town to accept it back as a town road, because it never was discontinued properly, it was simply closed. All the records show it was simply closed.
And neither side could, could show whether it was in fact done properly, and we, and we agree to that.
It's a town, if it was a townway before, then it should still be a townway.
Well, I know, that's why we battled this last year, and that's why $20,000 was put forward to.
I understand that as well, and that's kind of put us in a little bit of a quagmire.
Well.
As far as getting the road finished.
Yep, and if you want to put a.
I'll put a petition.
Put a petition forward, I mean, that's all it takes, put it in front of the people.
I have no problem, because that was a town road before it was closed, and it should still be one.
So, yeah, do it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for taking that on.
No problem.
Anyone else, public comment? Anyone else at all? Oh, okay. Announcements, sand bid is out until the 30th, District Two Road Commissioner resumes are due by the 30th, District Two Winter Maintenance is due by the 30th.
So this next one, before you wanted to.
Let's say we have meetings back on here again.
Well, and, and because they're special meetings.
Yes.
And I wanted to, I didn't have a chance to talk to you about this in the workshop, so, when we spoke on the phone, we originally said that we were going to, and I think that's the wrong date, I think it's supposed to be November 1st, so the 30th is when all the applications come in.
Yes.
Right? We decide, you guys said that you wanted to have a workshop Thursday evening at 7:00 to go over them, right? November 1st, but it's not recommended that we have a workshop, because it's public, and if we're going to be looking at job applications, and we're going to be looking at resumes and anything where anybody's.
True.
You know, it really should be done in executive session, you can't have an executive session in a workshop, so you've got two options, you can either have a meeting, where we'll call a meeting, and we'll go into an executive session, you'll come out, I don't expect that you'll make any decisions that night, because we'll need to check resumes and, and numbers and so forth, so we can do it that way, or we can have a workshop where I will have to, so we'll change, we'll basically cover the names on all the applicants, and name them applicant A, B, and C, and you can look at them that way, and discuss A, but you can't say names, as, as we're discussing, and, you know, references, and the letters that we've asked to go with the packet, so, but either way, that date should be November 1st, I think that you guys told me you wanted to meet on that Thursday, right?
Right.
So the question is, do you want it as a meeting, or do you want it as a workshop with names not disclosed?
Couldn't we just do the workshops with names, just, if we don't.
I'd prefer the meeting.
I'd prefer the meeting.
Yeah, because that way we can just discuss it, and.
Get it done with?
Yeah.
Yeah, but you, I mean, do you understand the difference, the workshop, you can't, I mean, you're not going to, I mean, you may see that this is so-and-so's resume, but.
Right, but we're not going to know who.
Well, no, you, you would know who, but it's just, I mean, if, workshops are more difficult, because everything's public.
Right.
But, and, well, and remember, the executive session, I think it's the first one, the 405A, the first one says that if anybody's, if anybody's character can be, you know, I'll pull the word up, basically, if you say anything that, that could, you know, harm someone, then, yeah, and I'm not saying that the board would, but let's just say that we had a letter of reference that wasn't really a positive, relative, letter of reference, not that you would ever include that in a packet, but let's just say that happened. Reading that out loud would affect somebody's.
I see, yeah, all right.
Character, so.
And that's fine, I just.
Okay, yeah, I'd prefer the, the meeting.
So we're going to post it as an executive session.
Yeah.
We're going to have just that one item on there.
Yep.
I mean, do you want, you want it filmed to the sense, or he's going to, so he's going to open it, and he's going to come, and he's going to stay until you come out and close it?
Maybe we should.
Okay.
We do all our meetings.
Yep, so bring a book, Eric.
Bring a book.
It'll take that long.